For the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, welcome to the Harbor Committee meeting, November 3rd. We have in attendance Hillary Thayer, Herb Stambul, Mary Ann, Eddie, Lily Fell. John is absent, and we have the presence of Fred Seal and Chick Voorhees. And wonderful Doris. See. So I guess the first thing to deal with is minutes, has everybody read the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so I'm not going to opine on them.
Well, we need John to comment on the minutes, I guess.
I somehow missed them, did you send them out? Sorry. Maybe if you hold it off till the end of the meeting, waiting to see if John's here.
Okay.
I can like quickly, are there, is there a printed copy in our packet? You don't have a, that would be great, I could scan them while we're talking, sorry Doris. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess the first item would be comments and questions, so we open this to. Is there anybody, so I guess we also have access to people online?
We have participants, we have eight. Is it?
Eight people. Can you see if anybody has their hand?
I do not see any hands.
No hands, from the audience? Don't be shy.
Bruce Anderson's up to the middle, insulting, I just hear kind of as a courtesy regarding. The Redwood Road, as requested, the updated plan and plan.
That should be when we bring that up.
Also.
One second, this is open to the public, just in general, then we'll get to eighty-eight.
Yeah, we need to close the public.
Yeah, we opened it for public, if there are no public, you can keep your notes up there.
You'll be first.
You'll be first, so I think that there are no questions or comments from the public. So we can close, do I have a motion to close the?
Yeah, I don't know, on the comment, you don't have to close that.
Okay, don't need, great. To the next item, okay, decisions.
Okay.
See the way it works.
I have a question for Chick, do we, is that buffer covenant?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
The what?
The instructions. This is something that Denise had worked on, and you may be familiar with, but with the permanence, it requires covenant to buffers to provide instructions to.
How to do that?
Yeah, there's a template, whereas the covenant is, which some people try to push back on, but stick with.
And refresh my memory about how that is enforced three years down? For instance, if in three years, is it, what are the increments?
There, well, first of all, we do have a pending permit through your consideration, a draft of that. That draft permit under condition number. Condition thirteen addresses annual inspections and annual reports to the village that will be filed to monitor the health of the buffer over that three years. So that's number thirteen, and number, condition number fourteen, which targets and restrictions reference, and as I said, it will be filed, and the instructions are attached after being filed.
And is that, so that is, does the building department pick that up as a matter of something on their calendar that they, within a year, or three years, whatever these are, do they have a list of follow-ups?
We would have to ask the building department, in the past, they have. Or at least they should be reviewing COs and other items that are keyed into the permit to make sure that the permit plans are being followed. So that would be something we would have to ask the building department.
Right, and one of the things that we were working on was that Chick worked with the building inspector to see that the, yeah, the full extent of the permit is carried out before the C O is given. So I think that's still up in the air.
I have one question, the three trees that you're cutting down, had that been previously noted on the landscape plan?
I guess they are, I believe so.
They were not, I actually sent Matt an email just to let him know that, and it's actually addressed in your cover letter, Bruce, that they weren't reflected on prior to plans that the committee had at that time, and I think I emailed the members when we sent the permit.
I apologize, I didn't see that.
Yeah, but they're in the, they're in the front of the house, out toward the road.
So my.
And I just wanted to make sure that if you knew it was aware, that someone from the applicant was here to explain it, and to point out that it was a difference from the plan that we heard at the October meeting, when you authorized me to prepare the permit.
Thank you, Chick.
From an environmental standpoint, doesn't seem to be an issue, but I know we're very sensitive to trees, and we like to save them wherever possible, so.
Why do they have?
That's why I asked Bruce to be able to explain.
Here's my question, since nineteen sixty-one, we've lost fifty percent of the trees in the world. Can you plant three trees in kind, and it's great for the environment, you've chopped three trees down? Well, that's great, but it's a buffer.
One tree is sort of in the front. One is to the side. And one is, one is a cedar tree on the corner, which is kind of scribing, they're not terrific trees, but we'll. We're gonna be planting, of course, a buffer, which is, and I guess we can plant some trees.
I think it would be nice to see, in my opinion.
Buffer is usually kind of low.
Buffers tend to be low.
Sanitation, yeah.
Scrubby things that help keep.
Bruce, was one of the trees in the front take, being taken out because of the IA system?
Correct.
Yes, I mean, you don't want to put a tree in your system. I wouldn't want to do that, one is on the side, is right up against the house. You can't, initially trees, actually, when you talk about tree, the root, the roots for a tree basically track what will be the trip line of the tree. So when you preserve these trees right up against structures, you're killing half the root ball, and then the tree falls on the house.
I understand. So.
As far as planting additional three trees, I don't think that's a problem for us, but we have to put them in a place that obviously doesn't.
I mean, you've got that platter in the right front, which is ten feet by ten feet, that's substantial. That would be a smart place to plant a tree, you know, you've got numerous places, I think, and why not?
Well, it wouldn't bother to just plant three trees in condition.
And something of a decent caliper would be delightful.
Can you briefly read us through the decision?
Sure. So, it did send around a draft permit, references the specific property, the elements of the proposed project, which one. Background, just to inspect the zoning, lot size, FEMA zones, et cetera. Findings are out on, if someone can check the history of that. If you want, I'm going to, you want to slightly change the ID under that, the foot line buffer equivalent, not a fifty-foot wetland buffer, which is whatever you need now. So I will make that change, and definitely reflect this. Based on the decision tonight, there is a dock structure. Arms, we look for for dock in terms of water depth and dimensions. There's the seeker statuses, it's a type two action, we have conditions of reapproval, which. Just in terms of the IA system, the buffer, timber materials, protection of dynamic development, construction debris, erosion control, all the standard conditions. And I mentioned before, our condition thirteen has to do with the performance for the wetland health, and the reports that will be submitted annually. And fourteen is the covenants, the last section outlines the plans that are the specific, specifically the records for the purpose of the permit. I will note that at the last meeting, I had asked the applicant to remove the hay bales, the way they were depicted on the plan, that was done, and that's reflected on the plans that we have.
One of the other things you asked them to do is add the surveys, the square footage of the proposed buffer, as opposed to what was required, because it was like a fifty percent overage, correct?
Correct.
And that's what we want.
And I don't see, I don't know if Bruce can comment on that, but I did check my notes, and I recognized that as well. There's a planting detail reference, but I don't see the square footage of the buffer. And you did ask for that.
It was part of the survey, as I recall.
Did you have anything in your file?
I don't have that, it was long.
It is, so the buffer is six thousand eighty-two square feet. Then I will also add that.
Okay.
Very clear. So we're going to, my patients, you'll have to approach me on having one, one pretty, pretty additional trees, based on. And the else.
State architect, excuse me.
Well, would the committee feel appropriate that Bruce works with Chick, and they come up with a suitable positioning of three extra trees to replace those? They'll push him hard on that, right, Chick?
With a bronze, and a bronze plaque that says Lily Fell.
All right. And we can move along.
Yeah.
Bruce wants, wants to do that, Bruce wants to do that.
Beautiful design.
Great, thank you, that's.
Or the driveway.
Just for the record, I want to let you know that the building inspector reviews the conditions for what I'm coming up with. And before the reason of the permit, before the reasons, C O, to make sure that all the conditions are met.
I didn't quite understand that, could you just repeat that again, you said that the building inspector reviewed the permit? The Chick is.
And when you get ready for the building permit processing, we review to make sure that all the conditions are met.
You're talking about the C O or the building permit?
The conditions that are listed on the wetlands permit.
Right, but it's reviewed, what, are you talking about when the C O is being given? Well, yeah, I understand that, I just, I know that I'm not really equipped to read, and I've been looking at these for ten years, to look at the planting plans and know whether or not they're executed correctly, and I would just have comfort. And Liz Vale at one point thought it would be appropriate that we'd have an environmental consultant sign off on the planting, plants, you know, the specific issues surrounding the Harbor Committee's designation of buffer, et cetera. But that's not for you to be worried about.
And I'll just ask them.
Yes, it is.
What?
Yes, it is.
Not Doris. Not gonna put doors in there.
That I looked at before is referenced in the permit, it's first bullet, and that's what has the dimensions of the buffer on it.
It has the buffer dimensions, okay, great.
But I'm gonna add it to the permit as well.
It almost should come back to Chick before the set vote release, so.
That's, that's what Liz Vale had said six months ago, but I said, maybe somebody from the committee, she said, no, you don't want to do that, you should have your environmental consultant do that.
Exactly right.
Chick, is that something you've done elsewhere?
Elsewhere, outside Harbor?
Yes, just as an example of, I mean.
You know, it's really case by case, at the request of the building inspector. I represent the village of Southampton and Sag Harbor, I've met with both building inspectors at Sag Harbor, feel they would like my input. The village of Sag Harbor in June adopted a fee structure, which does have a site visit as part of it, so we can certainly do it on request, but it has not been, you know, a matter of routine to me.
In the permit process, pardon me, in the permit process, there is now a line item for a site visit from your office?
Yes, there is, it's in a fee structure that was adopted by the village board in June.
That's a beautiful thing.
But like Southampton, they don't have a harbor committee.
Right.
It's all under one code, correct?
Under the zoning board of appeals, and they.
Okay.
Very similar to how the Harvard committee functions here.
Okay. But it's a little different, because we're the approving authority, correct? Isn't that how it's worded, Fred? Hello? In the, the wetlands code, it's like the harbor committee is the approving authority, correct? And that's like code, what is it, village code three sixty or something, as opposed to the rest of the building code?
Well, it's not.
Two eighty-five.
Yeah, it's a separate chapter.
Two eighty-five, right, exactly.
I mean, you know, the only thing that's really different, you know, and I can't speak to Southampton Village, but you know, our setbacks are, you know, there, there, there's a flexibility in our setbacks that in some codes, you know, before the zoning, it's an actual variance that they get. We're not really in the, when we don't meet the setbacks, we're not really in the variance, you know, we apply a standard, we're not applying variance standards, we're applying other standards, so.
Less, less restrictive, would you say?
I would say less, I, it's, it's, they're, to me, I wouldn't say less or more, I, in my opinion, they're more applicable to what we're dealing with, with wetland setbacks, and trying to apply, you know, the standards for zoning.
Right.
Setbacks to wetlands, and we're, we're really, I think our standards, you know, consider the importance of the resource more than some other places.
So Chick, don't we have a, a smaller distance, a smaller setback required in Sag Harbor than like Southampton or East Hampton?
Yes, I don't have much more to give you to other villages, but.
Aren't they like a hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet?
Hundred twenty-five foot is the landscape buffer, ours is fifty foot. They have a two hundred foot buffer for sanitary systems, and they have a hundred and fifty foot setback for structures. Much larger properties, much different conditions, obviously, around two thousand five, they're involved with the study that looked at the village of Sag Harbor itself. resulted in the renewed, the updated chapter of two eighty-five that considers all of those factors as related to Sag.
Right.
So it's hard to compare the two, if you want to think about it broadly, the village of Southampton is more similar to the town of Southampton. Again, much larger lots, much different conditions, you have a code that's specific to your village, and you know, I found it to be very good and realistic, and it's actually more stringent than it had been, which is why we're getting better buffers and, you know, improving environmental conditions in the village.
Great.
And that was two thousand five?
Yes, I'm sorry, two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
Just got ten years older.
All right, let's, this is a good discussion, but next time, or another time.
Not sure how it relates to eighty-eight Redwood. But I do have the notes, those changes will be made, we will reference the buffer in the permit, we will indicate as possible, are equivalent, and we will have condition, and through trees, the satisfaction of the village environmental consultant, and that's for your consideration, can?
Any other comments? Okay, do I hear a motion to pass eighty-eight Redwood as noted?
I move.
Are you a second? So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, so it is to pass. The second application. Through the John Street. Is there someone here for thirty John Street? Doris, did you say something about that, that application?
Mm-hmm. No, it's under decision or final approval.
Mm-hmm.
There was a question whether or not everything was paid up, the escrow, but I think that was resolved.
Okay, so there was no one here for thirty John Street? How about online?
That was Matt as well, wasn't it?
Yeah, we know who was just here for a vote.
It's probably during, and just for.
Prepare a draft.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Well, can we have Chick sort of just breeze us through the?
Yeah, sure, that's a good idea.
Sure, so yes, at the October meeting. Voice, at the October meeting, you would ask me to prepare a permit, we had some extensive reviews and discussions. There's a draft permit in your file that's circulated, it does identify the proposed project, it has seven elements of the project, they are installing an IA system. There will be part of the existing patio and shed, to be replaced with permeable gravel surface on the eastern property boundary. They're installing drainage, there are two trees being removed, and installation of lawn, new landscaping, land area of the buffer. And there's an expansion of a variable with buffer that, as I said, is being expanded. So we do have a background section on the zoning, the local soil requirements, FEMA requirements. The findings of the Harvard Committee related to chapter two eighty-five, the state institutions of the permit, recognizing IA system. It's been very important, type two action, consistent with the L W R P, it's a friendly lot in the village. And then a number of conditions that, again, are relatively standard, we do have trees, and we'll be in a mile and a half, and we go through a long year. So we have a tree clearing window, if there are trees, we remove, they would have to contact E C and or observe clearing window, we have erosion control. Again, the two conditions, in this case, number twelve is the performance, the annual reports to be submitted to demonstrate the buffer, and thirteen is a covenant of the presence of survey.
Was there any requests at the end of the last meeting that we had?
Yes, to plant two trees in kind for the tree two that are being cut down.
Well, one's enormous, right?
Well, the son had agreed to do it, if he wanted two or more, I think, but.
I actually don't remember that, I don't have any of my votes, so my apologies.
I know Matt had talked, we'd asked them to do that.
Okay, so we can make that a condition as we did with the last one.
And does that then also broach the question of the caliper of the trees?
Well, we'll review that, I mean, you know, we do have landscape architects and landscape ecologists on staff. A lot depends on nursery stock that's available, sometimes we find that smaller caliper trees take better and will act faster.
That's what Eve said, Lily.
Yeah.
So, you know, there are a number of factors, but we'll take that into consideration, and we'll put the allowance on the applicant to make a recommendation, and we'll review.
Correct, I agree with that.
Thoroughly reviewed with Bruce and his group.
Great.
Yes, please, thank you.
Sorry if I missed that.
You're right about planting smaller trees, I always think they do kind of do better in the long run.
They suddenly can, and a lot depends on the species, the nursery stock, we do refer local genotypes, and native plants wherever possible, use fertilization, irrigation needs, so that's not all part of the review.
Any other comments? Okay, so do I have a motion to pass as per just the comments, the addition of two trees at thirty John Street?
I make a motion.
The second?
Second.
So noted, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Doris? So the next item is correspondence requiring action. Is there someone here, or I guess for the Sag Harbor Yacht Club?
I actually spoke to Venna and sent her a picture of the agenda, said someone should be here to deal with it or do something, so.
Doris, is anybody, okay?
Down, down.
Well, even I said since the representative of the club.
There was an issue that, it's been so long, it's been sort of still.
That's right, that's right.
When did the last permit expire, I mean, is there any? When does it expire?
Chick, can you remember what the hiccup was on this, I mean, we just felt like somebody should be here to talk?
We have indicated that, and we, I believe, this is one where we're going to tell them that they need to.
Show up.
Well, to explain, but also, I mean, that's what we know, stable, until this meeting, awaiting appearance of the applicant.
Because my recollection, sorry, recollection is that this had expired a while ago.
And did it expire?
Two years ago.
Asked to have it renewed, or is it just kicked up to automatically renew?
No, no, it expired two years ago, and they've asked, they've come back and asked us to renew it.
Have there been any submissions since then?
Yeah, nothing more.
This is about the fourth, fourth meeting that's been on the, been on the agenda, and nobody's appeared the last three times, I think somebody did appear the first time. It was Dennis, yes, he was, he was gonna make sure that something was, was submitted, and so we haven't heard anything in three meetings.
Is this, is this the project that Lee School, that is working?
Is this, is this the project that Lee Skolik is working on right now that's before the ARB?
Did they want to add?
Isn't that correct? So it's in limbo there. Um, not that this.
But I don't understand why this is a harbor committee. Is there, are there wetlands? Cause there's a road between the property and the water. Which would take it outside of our purview unless there's some kind of wetlands, and I don't think there's wetlands.
So this is, this is, this is the permit for for the building.
For the second floor of the clubhouse that's on the beach.
Oh. I'm sorry, it's on the water, yes.
Oh, that's on the dock?
Yes, it's not the school.
Okay, okay.
They want to put a second floor balcony, I believe, on the old uh, you know, yacht club building.
Okay, so no one is here. Uh, I guess that at this point it needs to be removed from the agenda altogether until they.
Well, maybe we tell them they have to have a new application.
Just take it off the agenda.
Let, let them make.
I've told V. Bennett twice, who's the treasurer, the secretary.
So they.
I think that's sufficient.
They can bring it back.
Well, I think, but bring it, I mean, usually I don't know, remind me, don't we? If people don't show up, don't show up, don't show up, or we keep tabling, tabling. At some point we go fisher cut bait and then it's like they have to.
That's what we're saying. That's what we're saying, yeah. Because there is no application.
There is no app, exactly.
No application, then, yes.
This is speeding up time.
I think just taking off the agenda, you know, if we hear back from them, great, but I mean, this is like the third time we're like.
Right.
Okay.
We need to notify them?
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
So we don't need a motion for that. We just need to.
Don't even need that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah, what, so what does that mean? It means that they can come back and three months, ask us to renew this now expired um permit?
Yeah, it'd be the same.
Or, or do we just ask them to start over at scratch?
Well, you, you certainly could at this stage, yes. I, I they, they, they made a request. They haven't followed up on it. I think you take it off the agenda. Remains to be seen whether they make another request or what it is, but the older, the longer the permit has expired, I think the harder it is to just grant an extension.
Right.
Yeah. But it is something I think, you know, if they came and actually made, you know, made some sort of request, I mean, it could be evaluated. I think we don't really have anything to evaluate whether it's it, it, it would be proper to renew a permit or make them start over.
Because they think they're, they're not impacting the wetlands in any way.
I, I mean, listen, if there were no changed conditions and everything was kind of status quo the same way it was a couple of years ago, even though it expired, I mean, there would be really nothing to be gained by going through the whole process again, but I don't know that.
Right.
And it's not, um, it's not wetlands. It's actually the water. Because it's right out there in the water and they have a fuel dock there, right?
And it's a historical building.
Yeah, so.
Is, is this, is this before one of the other boards? Do we, which, do we know?
Yeah.
Not this.
I don't think so. I don't know.
But they're not changing the footprint of the building.
But they're changing the shape.
Well, I didn't know whether the architectural review board, for instance, whether there would be a requirement. Is this in the historic district? Does it have, I mean, it is, it is a historic, it is a historic building.
Have to go before the ARB to change anything.
And I do think they're changing the footprint because I remember there was things about how big the walkways were and whether or not it was like too narrow or whatever. There was like issues, questions.
And they were, they were going vertical.
Well, I think there was on, well, I don't know. We don't know because we don't have the person here.
To evaluate it once they apply, so. Okay.
Right.
Full business. Application for twenty-two Long Point Road.
I'm here online, Mike.
Hey Joe.
Hi.
Joe, you bring up the uh.
I can't.
And who's the person?
Joe Waller from St. James.
Okay.
And I also have a, Aaron from Bay Pass here. So we just want to talk about the picture and and the shed. So, at the last meeting, um, there were three general requests that that were made. One was to evaluate whether geothermal would be uh, an option to eliminate the need to have air AC condensers. To uh to reduce the size of the parking area um and to uh actually, I think there were those two, and then so we came back with with kind of three points in our letter. So, uh, after evaluation of the uh geothermal use, we determined that it would be uh more of an impact to try and install geothermal wells because um, as I say in my letter, uh the condensers, uh, so just because you have the wells in the ground doesn't mean that you also don't need, yes.
I think we were just asking you to put split systems on, not a geothermal unit. Like a slip.
We will have us to evaluate to just look to see whether it was wrong. Yeah.
And or or split. We adopted a split system.
Right. Um, so when, when we through the evaluation, we found that a geothermal system would be more of an impact for a number of reasons that I've described in my letter. Um, so when uh in discussing this with the, the architects, um, we thought that we would try and uh provide it an alternative that would reduce the size. I know that you had asked us to remove the shed, but what we have done instead was to reduce its size and then push it back to the required setback under wetland code. So the, the size of it has been cut almost in half uh by seventy-one square feet. Um, and it is at the required setback. We've essentially found the one location on the site that has a conforming setback.
So.
And that's where they first.
So one of the things was um, I think we were hoping that it would be consolidated so there'd be one structure on the property. But there was the question of the size, but there was also the question of the fourteen foot height.
Correct. So um, in order to, uh, Joe, can you go to uh the, the plan that shows the section drawn? So we did not have this done in time just a minute, so we just wanted to show you um that we um we have proposed a fourteen to sixteen foot poultry when um installed, when everything is built. Um, there'll be a tree, there's a tree, a, a, an eastern.
Um, Doris or something, can somebody tilt that um screen so that or can you?
Yeah. Yeah, what's the point in that?
That's what we talked about last time.
Asked why you put split systems on to just completely get rid of the shed?
Yeah, that's good for us. I don't know if it's fair or legal to not have it shown to the um public, but.
You could put it on this screen.
That's a problem, I think.
Oh.
We have access to this screen that where we can. It was a problem last one.
Can you show that sectional elevation?
Oh, there you go.
There.
All, all air conditioning systems just are sort of split systems. There's an exterior, it has air conditioning here, air handler. There's one thing that were, you know, commonly accustomed to. It's very small. Has very small exterior. So, so you're not able to serve even such a small house. Uh, so this is still a split system in the sense that there's an air handler and has and a condenser outside, but they're just slightly larger.
How many BT, how many BTUs have you got?
We don't, we haven't gone to that point uh of calculating BTUs, but uh the, the exterior grid is range from thirty inches by thirty inches by thirty inches to thirty-six by thirty-six by thirty-six. They're all very similar in size.
And how many zones do you have that you're?
Just two. There are only two. It's a bit, as you know, small.
Can you explain what's going on in this uh structure?
Sure. Um, the, because we're gonna flood zone, uh, we have to raise the air conditioning units above the floodplain elevation. Um, and when you do that, you have uh somewhere underneath just one garbage cans which would otherwise be some outside the the property. So we're sort of trying to consolidate the, the amount of footprint of accessory uh occupation of the site by tucking garbage cans in that storage underneath the air conditioners.
I, I just don't, I don't see it. And that person, that person must be like over six feet tall. If that thing's fourteen feet tall, it looks like that person is like almost half the height of the structure.
Joe, you, you put in the person I have, I think it.
Yeah, the, the person is approximately, you know, five and a half feet tall, you know, just under um half the height, you know, seven feet would be half. So this person is slightly less than half the height of the structure. But the, the section is drawn accurately in that the structure is represented at fourteen feet and the uh evergreen cedar that we're proposing to plant on the roadside of the shed is proposed to be installed at fourteen to sixteen feet in height.
And what's the street elevation of that? What's the dimension?
The elevation of the street?
What is the, what is the left to right dimension on this?
Oh, I can uh just go back to the plan. I don't know, Aaron, if you know that off the top of your head, but I can scale from here.
I'm not, I'm not, please. You want to know in plan what the dimensions of the link are?
Of, of the shed, yeah.
Of the shed. Uh, it's a top segment. It's two five.
And what was the reason that you couldn't put that on the roof?
Already at our maximum height because we, from a zoning perspective, we lifted the house up because it, and just absolutely to the level we have to 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 get like for the house.
How high is the um, I, I don't know what the FEMA elevation is there.
Uh, with the three boards, it's two.
Yeah, I believe with three boards, it's eight feet. So elevation is six and plus two, where's your state report? So the first floor elevation is at eight.
And how many square feet is total?
You total.
For the house.
For the house? Um, like the footprint of the house?
Well, for the top floor and the bottom floor combined, the whole, all the whole house together.
Gross square footage.
One thousand nine hundred.
And that's gross square footage, not the capital square footage. So gross square footage based on the.
Outdoubt.
I, I lost the train there when you were talking about FEMA's three feet. And then what was another two feet?
Uh, it is uh sixty about sea level and then.
Is how much?
Sixty.
Sixty above sea level and the state requires additional two feet of.
What's the um, the height of the land right there? So we're not at zero, right?
So I understand with the split systems, you say you can't get the, you know, you can generally three units per I recently went and looked because I was thinking and you can get the inside of the ducted ones that run along with the tubes that certainly put an air conditioning heating system on the side of that house.
Right.
Hang it off.
Correct. It would, I mean. It would, the units are three feet by five feet in height and you attach it to the side of the house and then that way it keeps it out of the water. So you don't have to worry about, you know, when it floods. And I believe that you know, you're the architect, that you could get sufficient coverage of cooling of that building.
I guess issue with that would be that I hang it off the side, I'm sorry, hang it off the side of the house. That it can't sit right against the house. It has the house on more to breathe. And then there, there's a footprint to that that would be added to this house that would be not very far.
They physically are hung on the side of the house. I can give you an example of the central air systems and, you know, and it only extends by a foot, a foot.
Some of the, some will often require certain amount of space so that someone can service them and, and, and so it's not just a matter of.
Correct. There is some ducting work upstairs.
Ducting work inside, but also in order to service on the outside, especially if you lift it up. Um, you can't just put it there with a ladder going up to it. If someone's going to service the system, then there has to be some amount of room around the system for someone to get there.
So I've seen a lot of these. I've never seen a tower that's built for an air conditioning unit. And then, oh, by the way, we can put the garbage cans underneath it. It just, there's just something in my mind that's just going, this does not make sense. I mean, it makes sense because you get to separate the noisy air conditioning condenser maybe from the house. But I, I don't see in any of these plans that we review or anything maybe that you've done well. Where you want to put the air conditioning unit so far away and then construct a fourteen foot tower.
Yeah, I, I uh, I, I think this is pretty rough. You can do a ducted mini split for your square footage and half the volume and hang it on the side of the house. And you wouldn't actually, if you put it on the second floor, you wouldn't be increasing your footprint. And it would be a gesture in the right direction as opposed to this, which is it's a gesture in the wrong direction from, I think, our point of view.
If I could just address the mini split one more time, but hanging them off the side of the house, looking from a bird's eye view down. Those, those would be in addition to the footprint of this house.
It's a foot and a half.
Times the length of the.
Three feet by five feet times.
Separate.
Well, if you take a bird's eye view, you're gonna see this.
I mean, this is to have a tower coming one more.
I mean, this certainly has more of an impact. It's the separate, separate location. I mean, I, you know, I'm not, I, I know very little about air conditioners, but I could take you to houses where, where they have, you know, internal units. Uh, and, and don't have to have this, you know, additional of houses that are bigger than what you're proposing.
But they're not in a floodplain and they don't be, usually they're in the yard sitting on the ground.
No.
No, they're in the house.
Because they're on the side of the house, then they're out of the floodplain. These are.
You know, the image, the image is uh Hong Kong, Singapore, all of Europe.
I don't think that's what the neighbors would want to see.
It's much better. I think it's better than seeing this tower, in my opinion, and in the in the view shed.
Personally, I don't think the neighbors would want to drive by and see air conditioning units hanging off.
Your client is a neighbor. There, there's no other buddy that is going to look at this.
That's not true. I mean, anybody in the water is gonna see this structure.
Correct.
You know.
From the water.
From the water and from across the water. There's gonna be this.
You could go Hollywood Juniper. What, revegetate it with native trees.
Around the house.
Yeah, you're hiding this anyway. Just move.
Aaron, it seems like this is an architectural solution that can be resolved mechanically. You have the opportunity to look at uh mini splits, ducted or otherwise. The fact of the matter is that condenser, that distance from the house is going to require a larger condenser because you're pushing all of that gas in a line. If you put the condenser closer to the house, you reduce the draw on your condenser. You know that. And they, these guys are not noisy these days. Uh, I have them next to my house. I have three thousand square feet. You don't even know they're on.
Correct.
I think we're asking you to go back and think this through, that this is not working for us.
So ju- just, just to be clear. Regardless of the fact that we were able to move the, this structure to the required setback under, so, under uh the land code. Um, and we reduced the size of it, uh, you would still like us to look at attaching. Uh, you would still like us to look at attaching these to the house. I'm, I'm just making sure that it's.
Like I asked you in the last meeting, please. This is a practical alternative, I believe.
Well, I think he's saying that it meets the setbacks so that, so that they're not required to.
Thank you, John.
But I guess you could tell it meets the letter of the law, but not the spirit of the law. And, and maybe certainly, um, there are alternatives to this location and this volume that need to be investigated. I, I just, I know that from my own experience, this, this is not the only solution mechanically to the project.
We'll go back before you get into any more details. You know, at the beginning of your presentation, you listed three things that you said we asked for. Well, according to my recollection, you left out the fourth, which was the biggest, which was why whi- which was to come to us with an argument as to why you should be allowed to build a building here at all. You know, since it doesn't meet the setback requirement.
Now they want two buildings.
And si- and since, since the applicant knew that it didn't meet it when he bought the property. And so, uh, I mean, it's, I think that's the first thing that needs to be addressed before we get into any of the details. And I don't know whether you've submitted anything on that or not, but, but I haven't seen.
We did discuss that at length. And at the end of the last meeting, I went through and asked, what are the items that you would still like us to address? And that was not one of them. I'm, I'm just being, like, i- if it was, I would have definitely provided. So i- if you, if you do want me to address that in writing, I can definitely do that.
Actually, that's the, of my mind, that is the first, uh, and last question. And I, I, it was something I wanted to ask uh, our council about because there was some interpretation about, well, if the purchase was made with the knowledge that there were wetlands restrictions, what is the give? What, what are you entitled to versus?
We went through that.
Right. And I would just like to be.
I mean, I, I didn't add that to your list because I thought that you, when you listed it at the end of the meeting, okay? I, I thought that we were talking about the details, you know, the, the, the air conditioning, the, you know, the placements of this, the the walkways and that kind of thing, you know, that it was, that, that you knew that there was a question, that there was the fundamental question we had proposed at the beginning as to whether there was a, 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 a right to build here, you know, at all, uh, where it was clear that it didn't meet the setbacks. Uh, so for me, that's still a fundamental question, okay? And I, I, I think it's a waste of time to deal with these other things without dealing with that. And I don't know whether anybody else here agrees. I think it, it sounds like Will, Will agrees with that, but.
Yeah, I was actually thinking about writing, uh, uh, this question to Fred some time ago. And I thought that maybe the best thing to do is just hear publicly.
Didn't we talk about this?
At the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to kind of go through the different levels that are in our code. I mean, you know, if you meet all the setbacks, you know, there's still standards you have to meet that are outlined in the code. Uh, it's not just meeting the setbacks. You have to meet those understa- understandings. And then, you know, if you can't meet the setbacks, that's when we always have this discussion about, you know, are, are there, are there other practicable alternatives that could meet the standards? And, you know, if there aren't any, then, you know, there's a whole set of additional standards that, that you have to meet if you're gonna grant that's an approval. So, you know, I think in that analysis where we are with here is whether or not there's any project that can meet the standards of the code. And that's when, you know, if you're, i- i- when you start considering that, that's when this issue of when was the property purchased and you know, i- if there's, if a property is so constrained that it would be reasonable to understand that it really, there's difficulty in building anything there. And the owner had knowledge of those standards at the time, you know, that's relevant as opposed to a situation where the owner had the property and, and the village changed the standards. For example, if somebody had, had bought this property in twenty twelve and then we changed the code in twenty fifteen. So that, that's when that becomes relevant. But you, 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 you know, when that, you know, the, when it was born and all, and knowledge, all of that, that only becomes relevant when you end up in a situation where there's a question as to, you know, you can grant a permit for anything, whether it can meet, even can meet the standards that are required when you can't. And I think that's coming to play here because of the constraints, constraints on the site. So, um, you know, in looking at, at this application, you know, the, uh, you know, the, the setback standards, it's two eighty-five-nine, the setback standards are A. You know, and we all know them very well. Then, then B is, you know, is in addition to the setbacks, the other standards, you know, adversely affect water quality, marine life. And then, um, you know, where we get into, you know, in D is where you can't meet the setbacks or you're, there, there's the allegation that we can't make the setbacks. And we make them prove that there are no practicable alternatives that can meet the setbacks. And if there are none, which probably is the case here, we have no practical alternatives. Then you get into uh, D four, which is the, all of the rest of, you know, the, wha- what standards you'd have to meet in that case. And you, you still have to show that you're not gonna have any adverse impact on the wetlands and water quality. And that's when you start looking at, well, what mitigative measures are being put forward to try to do that. And that's some of the discussion.
Well, what, what I'm looking at, at, at here is that this is, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, th- this is adjacent to the applicant's other property where he has a house.
Single, separate ownership, but yes. It's owned under a single and separate ownership LLC. So regardless, so yes, it is owned by the same person that owns the next door. However, you technically have to treat it as if it was a.
You have two separately legal entities that give it single and separate status. They just happen to be entities that are controlled by the same person.
What, what I was, what I was getting at, and, and I suppose you can argue otherwise, but, but what I was gonna say is, be- because the applicant owns the house next door under some circumstances, this isn't the only use that he could have for this property. In other words, building a house on it is not the only way he can enjoy that property. Because it basically enlarges the, the, the area that, that, that he owns. Um, so it, it's, there may be a technicality there in making that argument, but that's the way that, you know, that, that, that I'm, I'm looking at it. Uh, as this, this isn't somebody who's, it's the only lot he owns in the area. And the only thing you can do with it is build a house on it. Uh, it would still be a valuable asset if it didn't have a house on it. And there are probably other uses that, that this property could be put to, which would be a benefit to the other property or to the owner, et, et cetera. I, I, I mean, also concern, and this isn't, may not directly, you know, affect you as much as it affects the committee. But I'm also concerned with, with the, with the precedent that we, we might set, be- because I think that there are other properties in the village um, that are too small in terms of, or, or have so much wetlands on them that, that you can't build a, a house on them and come anywhere near close to meeting the setbacks. And, and I know that if we approve, or I believe that if we approve this, that we may have other applicants coming in and say, hey, you approved that. Why won't you approve mine? I wanna build a house on that. I was just holding off because I didn't think I could do it. Now I see you've set the precedent by allowing this. Um, and I'm concerned about that. So anyway, I, I mean, again, I'd like to see what, you know, what your, you know, what, what your argument is here. And again, I think we're wasting time dealing with the detail. I'm not completely wasting our time. You were finding your application, but.
And also to start interrupt, a part of kind of making sure that there is, you know, specific precedent is, is to identify the fact that this is a more unique situation than another situation somewhere else in the village. Um, so.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know whether it's unique or not. I, I don't know whether it's unique or not. So, somebody told me, somebody already told me this week. Oh, there's another situation that's like that. And if you approve this, you know, they're gonna, they're, you know, they're gonna make an application.
Talking about it is, I think, important to the process. Uh, so I appreciate all of the input that you guys have given. And it helps me to kind of fill down to what information that I need to provide with. So I appreciate being with you guys.
So if I remember.
I, I just wanna make sure that we, we didn't lose what I thought was the, the big issue while, while dealing with, with what I would think, think of as more minute issues.
When we looked at the code, there's like a, an eight hundred foot minimum. But then that's interior space and it excludes any kind of like, what, utility rooms and blah, blah, blah. And didn't the building inspector go through and say that, um, am I the only one remembering this? That there was a square footage.
Face of.
Square footage that, you know, somehow building on the minimal size or the mac, what, minimal size feasible, but then you could add on to it. We came up to the square footage more or less as to what's been presented here. Is that not correct?
That is what I presented and what I stated so far.
What is, what is exactly? So do we have eight hundred square feet interior of living space? And then there's like a utility room here or whatever.
We have.
Can you give us that?
A- a- as submitted, it is eight hundred and sixteen square feet of habitable space because we didn't make any changes after we.
Okay, eighteen, sixteen.
A hundred and twenty-five square feet of mechanical space.
On the first floor.
On the first floor, correct. And the zoning code, or if you just wanna just make sure, the, the, um, the zoning code only specifies that it's a minimum eight hundred on the first floor and that you are also able to have, um, mechanical space. And, uh, we identified also in our plans, which I can, we can discuss, what specifically is in that hundred and twenty-five square feet, which is the, the water heater. If it's really kind of recompacted as, as, as much as I believe that we can.
The reason it's there and on crossways is because we're the flood zone.
Right.
Right.
So it has to be within the footprint regardless of whatever house is put there.
A hundred and twenty-five square feet is roughly what, ten by twelve? That's more than a water heater.
It's also the air handlers.
Well, where do we have that tower?
The, the air handlers are the part of the air conditioning is inside the house. And then the, the stuff that's, it's what you call the tower is the compressor. It's the, there's every air conditioning system has these two separate.
Yeah, I, that's a split idea.
You're such talented architects. I know you could easily solve that situation.
That only accounts for thirty-five. That's where the, the rest of it is, um, the, the, uh, the electrical panel and also the space in front of it because you do need to provide space in front of it. Uh, and, um, the boiler and the hot water tank. So ju- just to.
Chuck, what's in, what, uh, what is your interpretation of the minimum size house in New York? Cause I, I, I've come up with, uh, four hundred square feet. I've never read eight hundred square feet.
I think that's our code.
It's our code.
It's our code.
Yes.
So it's eight hundred plus.
Eight hundred on the first floor.
Yeah.
The footprint, right? Um, but I don't know. Does anybody here, the space person wanna say like, I mean, I, I kind of imagine like my basement and I have furnace, water heater, electric panel. All right. So it's not much different than a hundred and twenty-five square feet. All right. So we're up to like nine hundred and twenty-five interior space. Is that correct?
A second floor, which will be.
Look, that's different. So, but we have a footprint of almost eleven hundred square feet, correct?
Oh, yes. When you include the exterior stairs, the thickness of the exterior walls and that, I'm looking at the plan right here. That's, that's great stuff. So that level.
Right. So you have the thickness of the walls and then there's a stair that comes up to the front door, uh, and, um, and that's it. So you obviously need a staircase to get up to the, to the front. Uh, and then there's the thickness of the exterior of the wall, uh, which you.
So just going back, trying to talk to what you were bringing up, John. I think with the SAG Harbor code of eight hundred and then we've flatched on like this utility room. And then we've put a front staircase in thickness of the walls. It seems that like we're kind of at the minimum. If we think this is buildable, it sounds like this is minimum. Do we agree on that?
I think that's kind of what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Right.
And one of the things that, that I would look at, if you want me to, is, is to look at the zoning use table and look at, like, there, there, there's a number of things that I can provide to you. However, at the end of the day, this is the minimum house size under zoning. Um, so the house can't get any smaller. Um, and, uh,
So how big is the, um, the equipment that's in the, um, that's in the, in the tower? How big is that? I mean, it's a small house. It just shouldn't take like an enormous piece of equipment to air condition.
The, the, the tower itself is seventy-five square feet. Um, and that is two condensers.
Six by nine or something roughly?
Each condenser is thirty-six by thirty-six in footprint.
Okay.
They require, um, twelve inches all around them, twenty-four inches between and twenty-four inches for maintenance access on one side.
Okay, well, can we stop the technical and go back to the question that John brought up? I, I think that this is what's lingering in the minds of most of the people here. And I, I need help on this because I have an opinion, but I need it to be. Uh, I need help with this.
Yeah, and well, if I could, it, uh, here, my suggestion is, since you didn't understand correctly that, that, that we wanted you to address that issue. My suggestion is that you should go back and address that issue and then we discuss it.
Can you remind me what the issue is?
Whether, whether he's gonna be able to, whether he has a right to build a house here at all, since it doesn't, since, since there's no way that the minimum size house could be put on this property that comes anywhere near to meeting the setbacks.
I'm not sure.
And, and the owner knew that at the time that he purchased the property, or should have known it from his attorneys, architects, et cetera.
Herb?
Well, I think in fairness to the applicant, I don't think that's his, um, his calculus to, to do. I think that's I think that's something that we have to evaluate and.
I, I mean, I think the applicant's burden is two eighty-five D.
Right.
Chuck has said this a hundred times. Two eighty-five, nine, uh, D. That those are the standards that apply when you can't meet the setbacks, that you've gotta be able to demonstrate to the board that you can meet. You're from that, you meet those standards, you've gotta build a lot. You can't meet those standards, you don't. And, you know, the burden is, is on the applicant to present information as to how to meet the, that, why it meets those standards and you get to evaluate.
And you're, I think I remember you're saying that they bought this property either two years before or two years after.
After.
After the new code.
Correct.
Right? So what the code is right now should not have been a surprise.
He was fully aware of.
That was a, that was the big discussion.
That was, that was.
Well, he could address that. I mean, I, I get it. He, he, you could present something on paper that, that addresses that. But, um, I mean, I don't wanna go by just uh, you know, hearsay as to whether that's the case or not, or whatever. I mean, you know, so, uh.
Or even if that's something we should properly consider, I, I don't know if that's in the standards. If the buyer was aware of the standards or not, I don't.
Well, that's what, I, I mean, Herb, I don't think you were here, but I mean, Fred, Fred did go, Fred did go, did go over that.
Ultimately, if you don't grant a permit, there becomes a question as to whether or not it's a regulatory taking.
Right, I understand that.
That's right.
And whether something is a taking, and that, that's when this issue of.
I understand.
Oh, you know, what, when did they buy the property? That, that, that's when that comes into play.
And this is an unusual piece of land. This isn't just, you know, waterfront. This is a, an insulin. This is.
I, I think what happened at the end of the last meeting was there was a discussion, there was a question about when was the property purchased? And then I think you had a phone call or something.
Yes, that discussion happened at the very beginning. I wanted to make sure that that, uh, addressed and I did.
Yeah.
Indicate.
Put the facts in the record as to what, what that is.
Right.
It's in the rep, that's fine.
Yeah.
So I, if, if I understand the task, um, that's before you is that you have to answer to two eighty-five, nine dash D. You bring that information to us and then we will respond. And, and I, I just, I think it's, it's.
You are basically.
Okay.
And, and I'm.
And I think we owe you apology for not being clear about that at the last meeting. I thought that was paramount. Apparently it wasn't documented that way, but I think that that's the task. And before we get to BTU sizes, et cetera.
Yeah. If I could just amplify on that to Jake, if you disagree with this, but I, I think we've both said this a number of times. You know, once you, you, you understand that you can't meet the setbacks, which is clearly can't be done here. And once there aren't any practicable alternatives and you've got to meet the other standards that are in D, it's all about, I think to a large degree, what other things can you do to mitigate the impacts? And, you know, so that goes, what maybe, what mitigation measures are you taking to meet the standards?
Correct.
That one is not to build at all. I mean, one is to use it, is use the property for a different purpose.
No, the, the mitigation measures that Fred is talking about here, and Fred, you're probably wrong, is to show development. So what you're talking about is a practical turn as opposed to the mitigation measures that would be proposed in order to mitigate what is being actually proposed.
I, I, I understand that, but, but it.
They're two separate, I, I just, again, I, I realize that the, the controller of these entities may be in one person, but they are, for the purposes of the law, they are two separate.
Entities.
Legal entities. Before LLCs became as popular as they are, they've become the way of, we used to say checker boarding or putting things in single or separate, you know, to kind of put it into a more personal, I mean, typically the, you know, a way that you would, you would create single and separate is, you know, if you had a, for example, a husband and a wife, husband went on one lot, wife went on the other, maybe it'd be the husband and wife on one, husband owns the other, maybe the wife owns the other one on the other side. You could certainly argue that they have collectively had control over all of those properties, but they're still separate legal entities for, for the purposes of buildability.
Well, put it, put it a different way and, and maybe this is a question for, for you, but, but as I'm looking at this as, you know, can anyone in the village or outside of the village buy a piece of property in the village tomorrow? Knowing that there's no way that you can put the minimum sized house on it allowed and come anywhere near to meet, meeting the setbacks. Do we have to approve that just because they've done every effort to mitigate the environmental damage that's going to be caused by putting a building in place in a sensitive area that doesn't come close to meet the setbacks?
And the answer to that would be, did those mitigative measures meet the standards that are in the code?
Right.
And if they meet the standards, the answer is you would grant a permit. And if they don't, you don't. And then that gets, that's when we get to the issue of whether or not there's been a regulatory taking and all of that. But for the purposes of what you have to consider, burden is on the applicant to meet the standards and your job is, once he makes that case, to evaluate whether or not it meets the standards. And if it doesn't, it's a denial and if, if you think it does, it's an approval.
Are we clear on the concept?
Yes.
How do I close this one out?
We will make a motion.
I just had a couple of remarks and I.
Yeah.
Um, so just, I understand what John is saying and we have to understand that there's been some accurate one provision on the fundamental question. Just looking at my notes, I think we covered most of the items that I had in my notes from the last meeting. We did ask if there would be fill for the septic shit and what the height was. I didn't hear anything about fill.
There's fill for the septic system, but not specifically the septic shit.
Okay. Um, we had talked about the height of the structure, which I think has been presented. We asked about the status from other agents and companies. I didn't hear an update on that.
Health Department has said everything is fine there and the permission of wetlands and the D E C. We have not really followed up with them because I'm focusing on your.
On relative to the septic system?
No.
No, the, the, so the septic system, the Health Department has said that they are fine with the design.
Yeah.
Uh, we would just need to provide wetlands permits to maybe issue a permit and for the D E C for their whole application. We haven't read any specific that, but I also hadn't been following up with them specifically because I know that I wanted to address your information first before submitting any type of provided plan back to them.
Good.
Could you remind me, does, does, does the IA system meet the appropriate setbacks from, from the, from the wetlands?
The IA system does not have setback from wetlands. The IA system has setback from surface waters. So the reason why it's located there is because we are a hundred feet from surface waters from both the south and the north.
Okay, it does meet that.
It does meet that.
That does meet those requirements.
Yes.
Chip, I just.
What, Chick, is there, I'm sorry.
I thought we do have a setback requirement from sanitary.
We do, we do.
Yeah, it's a hundred feet from wetlands, correct?
From wetland.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
And it does not meet that?
It does not meet that. It meets the surface water setback because we also felt that it's more important to keep the septic system away from the actual water itself rather than the vegetated.
What is the setback for the septic? The, the proposed?
It is about thirty-some odd feet, which is exactly the same as what you approved on the property to the west.
Well, except.
I'm just making sure that we, we use that as the model. That was the exact look, so.
It was an existing house with an existing septic system dumping directly into the groundwater. Very different situation.
So this, this is, this is adding a, a septic system that wasn't there.
Right.
And this doesn't meet the setback requirements for a septic system under the village code. Correct?
Yes.
There are a lot of problems here.
Uh, we also asked what exterior lighting was planned. I didn't hear any updates on that.
Um. The lighting is actually shown on the plan. It was recently made there, just really hard to see. When I, when I, when we recent, it will provide specific details on that.
Uh, we asked that the offer equivalent calculation you put on the plan.
Uh, it, it was on the plan and we pointed it out, but it is fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-four square feet.
Yes. I was thinking one year. Um, you were going to update erosion control plans probably once we get to answering some of those questions.
Right.
And you did address the car park area and made some changes there.
Yeah.
So those are my notes from the last meeting, but I think that the fundamental question is critical and will go towards weighing this application in consideration of two eighty-five, nine D.
Doris, you want to ask if there's anybody?
I'm checking.
Has a question? No hands? So do I have a motion to table this until the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table this until December first.
First, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is.
I think so.
They are requesting a German.
That's right.
Is that still, is it still on the basis of, of needing a, a variance?
Yes, actually they, they have standard for a public hearing.
Okay, so we should just keep it, keep this journey up for that.
Go month to month.
Yeah.
All right, the next item are.
Make a motion to, I make a motion to table eighteen Sandview Avenue until December first.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made.
No, yeah, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay. Discussion item, one ninety-two Redwood Road. Is there anyone here for that?
Yes, good evening. Chuck Hamilton. Can you hear me? Who?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. We've done, we've done some homework as a result of your, your direction from the last meeting. We came up with three different proposals, but let me just tell you about in detail what we did. Uh, the first thing is we, in our new proposals, we removed the southern rock sill wall that was adjacent to the southern property line that was between the dock and that property. So that's, that's been removed. And then we also, in our three different.
Do you have, do you have drawings that you can put on the screen or not?
Okay, you're going to challenge me, but I'm going to try.
You're up to the task.
Do drawings, I assume, are in our packet here?
Yes, they are, but it says I'm disabled from participant screen sharing. I mean, I didn't mean it that way, but can I try it now? I'll try now. Yeah, the reason it says I'm disabled for screen sharing. Can you help me with that? Jane? Can you, uh, can you see this on your screen?
See your screens.
I'm sharing proposal number one.
Yeah, I'm looking. Here we go. It looks like this.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Cause I, I have proposal number one and can you see it on your screen?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
No, I'm sorry, no. No, we don't, yeah.
Well, you don't, really?
You got to open it.
It looks like you've got a zip file with three different proposals.
Okay.
Five, they're not, the one.
Oh, they're not open? Okay, hold standby. About now?
No, not yet.
Okay, let me get rid of that zip file. About now? His mind is showing either proposal. All right. Let me just start it over again. Hey Jane, you couldn't help me, could you?
If you open your PDF before you share the screen.
Okay. Okay. How about now?
Okay, hard copies here. I think we can.
Hard copies are, they're fine.
Yeah, you, you just walk, go ahead and walk us through.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll take some training the next month. Two months' training. Oh, God.
There's alternative one here.
Okay, alternative one is, as, as you can see, an alternative one, it's going to be page six of seven. It's going to be three rock sills and we pretty much tie the northern rock sill into the, the bulkhead return on the, on the, on the north side. The one thing I wanted to add, I, we also did, and I, I just want to explain right now, when you look at page seven to seven, John had concerns about permeability. All these rock walls will now have a one inch to two inch gap between all the rocks. So when you look at that rock wall, it'll have one to two inch rock, one to two inch gaps to all the rocks at all three levels. So the water will kind of flow through like a sponge when it comes in and then it'll come in through the two inlets to the main inlet. And so we did change that design and make all of our walls will be permeable. So when you look at this, the water will flow through the rock walls, it will come through the, the center inletway and will also come from the southern. And.
There it is, okay.
Footprint of planting is still the same as our original design and we're still doing plant on the south side of the dock. And the reason we're doing that is to use that as a control. And, and what I mean by that is we're, we're going to be planting all this marsh behind the, the rock sills, but I want to have a control to see how effective, if I just place sand and plant marsh in front of existing bog, what I will get for growth. So that will be my control on the south side of the dock. The area north of the dock will be our, our planting area. And if you want to go to page seven of seven, you can just see on, on the cross view where it says this emergent rock wall and it has, you know, one to two inch gaps between all the rocks. So laterally and vertically will be, have a permeable structure and I think that will really help us get through the, the water into the, into the location. So this is our first alternative. It's kind of, the footprint is our original proposal. Proposal number two is, one of the, I concept you guys gave us look at is can we be, can we be perpendicular to the tide or also the wind direction? So proposal number two on page six of seven is kind of a curved rock wall, rock system. And what we do on, on proposal number two is I'm tying into the northern extremity of the bulkhead to the north, we're kind of tied into their rock, we'll plant a little bit more intertidal marsh. I'm still having that central water flow coming through. But remember, these are permeable rock sills, the water will flow right through that. And if you look on the left-hand side of the plan on page six of seven, you see the direction of northwest wind. So it's kind of planted like a, like a catcher's glove, the way we did this design where it would just kind of, you know, catch the wave action from those northwest waves that come on, on a, on a, you know, somewhat frequent events. And the central one, we have it kind of oblique to it just to kind of reflect the waves out rather than absorb it. So that's, it's kind of, you know, how we did the design that way. And again, the same concept is south of the dock area, I'm going to, we're going to place sand, we're going to plant marsh without any, any, any rock in front, just to see how that will go. It might be, you know, it might be enough to be able to succeed, but I want to use it as our control area to see what the growth is if things didn't have a, a more, a rock sill wall in front of it. So that's proposal number two. Proposal number three is again, is the, the straight line, permeable rock, rock walls, same concept with the wall will flow through the three rock walls. Water will come, you know, directed. You put this wall a little bit closer, so it's kind of slows down the flow, there's a narrow flow there.
Yeah.
But again, the same concept on this plan three, you can see a direction northwest wind. This straight design out here, it's the farthest limit offshore, kind of puts the waves away from everything. It, it, if there's any kind of wave reflection reflected to the north, this wall would, would absorb those energies. So it's, it's a farther, and, and what we did in the, in the center of this proposal number three, you see a lot of sand on the, on the south wall. We're establishing more of a mud flat to see how that will work. If water was running through that, how would that would work with the marsh? Definitely, marshes, marshes try to march offshore. So that's kind of on proposal three. It's a little bit different, the rock wall, a different planting area, but again, still using a control south of the dock area to the southern property wall.
Says it's on.
Permeable walls. Permeable walls.
Mr. Hamilton, I don't, I'm struggling to find where the direction of the wind is indicated.
Oh, okay, see, if you, if you look, uh, upper left-hand corner, see the north arrow?
Yes.
That's the way.
That arrow-
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Didn't look at the obvious.
I'll make it bigger lettering next time.
And also the height of the rock walls again.
The rock wall, the top is right at a mean high water elevation. We want, so when you have high tide, you won't really see the structure, or spring.
I see.
But I, you know, if, some of the other designs that we gave you in our first presentation, shows other walls, a lot of the people will do what we call emergent, where they're one to two, three feet, one to two feet above high water. So you're always gonna see this rock breakwater out there. From, from a wave reflection, rave absorption, it makes sense to me, I don't need to, I don't have to be above high tide or, or spring high water. I just to be, have enough mass in the, in the, uh, in the water, to abate the wave action. So I, I felt that we, you, you want to hide, go no higher than mean high water, and be what I, emergent wall, versus the emergent.
And which of these do you feel will be the most successful?
I was hoping you would help me with that.
Well, my first reaction is that, uh, number two has a, a more undulating shape, and, is, I, I would think aesthetically, uh, I don't know in terms of structure, but it seems like it would also deflect better than a straight line. So the other two, number one and number three, are a straight line that look really man-made, um, relative to, number two. I think that it's really interesting, it is, in plan, it looks like it's very overwhelming, in section, it's quite de minimis.
Yes, yeah, and, and again, it's, it's probably more of the, the way the scale has been, and, and the, the southern rock wall is, is, the way it's depicted on page six of seven is not going to be that wide. That, uh, that's gonna be narrow, that didn't scale out right from that, I can see that right now, that's, it's not gonna be that large. But, you know, it's gonna be kind of stacked up, so, you know, the, the footprint will be five feet wide, but by the time you get to the top, it will be five feet wide. So it's, it's, you know, just imagine those as being about five feet wide, you know, about two bases.
So in the plan, what we're looking at is really the foundation of the stone, the widest part, we're not looking at the, what a bird might see at a high tide.
That's correct, at, at high tide, if you go, if you look at, uh, I would look at, look at this page seven of seven. On, you know, cause it kind of shows, you know, at, at low water, you know, the whole structure is gonna show, but it's gonna be, you know, roughly about, you know, three foot high, basically. Above this, above the bay bottom. But at high tide, uh, you'll see nothing, it should be covered, that's, that's the design I wanted to do. The, the advantage of this emerging type of wall is, I should get some marine organisms growing on it, whether it be barnacles, algaes, you know, the rock weed that's so prevalent in that area. Uh, this is, you know, the rocks seem to do very well in, in, in having, uh, the rock weed in that area attached. So since I already have it there, this, I, I would be hoping to, to have that, I'd have, you know, some algaes and things like that, and, uh, you know, mud snails and things like that in the past. I'm thinking it could be, you know, pretty good habitat, uh, and all the habitat that's out there on, on the property, uh, to the north, uh, of Josh Schwartz, seem to have really good attachment organisms and things like that. And I'm hoping with this to mimic that same type of, uh, attachment type of structure with them.
Let me, let me ask you something, uh, to move this forward, would it be possible for some of us to go out and see some version, spray painted out, very biodegradable paint, because we're typically very, we look at floor plans, foundations, roof plans, et cetera. This is really interesting, and, uh, because it's so unique, I don't know that anybody here has really, much firsthand experience. You've talked about some other projects on the North Shore and elsewhere. I think we're all pretty excited about this. It would be nice, because it's an educational experience, uh, as well as, uh, beyond that, if there would be some way of doing some kind of a mock-up, without incurring too, maybe you put, bamboo post with some orange tape, just to see what these shapes look like, you don't have to do much more than that. So we get a sense, because, for instance, if we're looking at the north property line in Schwartz, I like proper, I like proposition two, because that corner goes away, and that corner is always gonna be a problem in my mind in terms of the wave action, et cetera. And I've been there, but I haven't been there with, with these, uh, drawings. And I, I don't know how to do that.
I think, John, I, I think, John, what we, we could potentially do is, uh, there's two ways I could do it. Out, and I'll stake, you know, the footprint, uh, the, the bottom footprint, and, you know, we'll stake it, and then we'll string it. You know, we'll string it and flag it, so you'll kind of like, you know, you'll at least see the footprint where, where these sills go. Uh, we could do that, I think, I think we can do that. Uh, the other option is, uh, I'll have to work with Jane, uh, but let me see if I get some sort of, uh, I, yeah, yeah, uh, would you like to see how the rock's gonna be set? What, what are you thinking about that? Or can you visualize that?
I, I, I have a different feeling about this. Um, I feel like we, this is a huge risk. And it's not just for Mr. Spiegel and his property, but this is like the first natural shoreline that we have, um, entertained in Sag Harbor. And if this fails, that's gonna reverberate for a very long time. And I worry, I don't know if Chick has had experience hands-on with natural shorelines, but I think we really need to garner some experience from people who have lived through this. Now, I did call, I was the one who mentioned those different sites in the North Shore, and I called and asked about them, while I was texting actually. And I found out that Widow's Hole, which is the big property that was given to, um, the town of Southold and the town of Greenport, it's a failed project. So we really need to understand and learn from that failure,
Yeah.
and other people that have been, have been really focused on this, not like it's one piece of business that people are entertaining right now, but people that have been really focused on natural shoreline, and can really add to the discussion.
Well, and I agree, Mary Ann, but you can't, you can't afford to fail, especially in the community for the first time, so I, I-
Say what?
You know, this, I, I, I've been involved with many plantings over the last thirty, forty years of intertidal marshes and high marshes. And, and the failure rate, even, uh, just for pure planting, it, without, you know, this type of work, is, is, is higher than fifty percent. That's, that's number one. Number two is, you know, when you're looking at, uh, you know, what's, what's, what's going on right now in this area, it's all bog, intertidal moss, bog, uh, old age, uh, high moss. You know, we're gonna change to a sand-based, uh, intertidal marsh area, and, and you can see some of it's already growing on its own, but will it be as thick, will it be as prolific? You know, a lot of people are gonna tell you that they don't know the answer, and they know the answer, it's, it's a guess. My best, one option we had is, is there's two, there's two people that, at the, at the DEC who specialize only in this. And we can, we can revisit them with, with our project or proposal, and see what they have. I mean, the biggest concern I have is, is, you know, I want to use native genotype, uh, Spartano alternate floor in this area, that's, that's already there. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get that kind of seed, plant there, or, or use that for transplanting. The second is, like, you know, organic, you know, sand substrate versus pure sand substrate, you know? What's, what's gonna be my change? And all the products that I've seen that are now ongoing, now being built throughout Long Island, are all sand-based fill, no, no mix of organics, just pure sand, and it's just doing it at a, at a certain elevation. That's, that's pretty much the primary design, I've seen no difference, I, I previewed about thirty different projects, you know-
Have you looked at the Environmental Learning Center? Cause I understand that that one is quite successful.
Where is the Environmental Learning Center? Where is that?
Um, well, I don't have the address, I did visit it, but this was like going back eighteen months ago, Chick, you're kind of like moving your head, is that like, yes, you know?
I, I don't know where that is, no, I'm sorry.
Um-
That's in Southland.
It's, it's part of Cornell, it's the Cornell-
Yes, it's a Cornell project.
Yeah.
And I, so I just had a text exchange with, um, Joyce Novak, who's the head of the Pecan Castori Program.
Right.
Partnership, rather, and she said, it looks great.
Okay.
So, I'm just, yes, I understand that this is something that's fraught with problems, and attempts have been unsuccessful. It broke my heart to hear Widow's Hole is a failed project. I don't know exactly how and what those parameters are, to find it that way, but I think-
Factor in, in wetland restoration, it's called maintenance, and, 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 and as things don't work, you keep looking at it, and, you know, either, you know, finding out why things are failing and doing maintenance. Many of the projects that I've seen in wetland restorations, the people install them, they plant it, and never do any maintenance. That, that might come up on, on top of the plants, they don't, they don't try to stop the geese from coming in, and the swans coming and eating the intertidal marsh. It means a lot of maintenance. That's, in my, in, in, in most cases, it's a lack of maintenance and lack of, you know, watching what's going on and being able to modify-
Do you think it'd be appropriate to get like, uh, um, an insider's view as to why that project failed?
Widow's Hole, sure.
Like, but I think that would be really great to have like a, a self-critique of, of why, cause there were a lot of people working on that. A lot of smart people, I think. And I'd also like to, on the comparative side, know why this Environmental Learning Center is a success. And, and what are the lessons that we could take from those? And maybe I can drum up a couple more, I don't know, but-
Okay.
Can I just say something? The Widow's Hole, um, location is completely different, it's a very exposed location.
It's a very what?
Very exposed. If you don't know where it is exactly, it's right, um, just near the North Ferry Terminal in Greenport, based in Shelter Island. Um, if you turn the point, there's condominiums and stuff like that. So you have a level of shoreline that is extremely exposed, more so than, more so than, uh, the Spiegel residence, um, and then the Cornell area is in a canal situation, so that is very protected. And living shorelines are gonna naturally, um, thrive better in a more protected area. With the Spiegel location, the difference between Widow's Hole, the design was, is totally different. You know, they didn't have rock in the water to protect vegetation. The rock that they used was landward of the vegetation that was planted.
So I, a year ago, when I was up there, they were talking about putting rocks in the water, to break up that, and the, the tidal action. I don't know if it ever went to that extent, but-
We're not there, we're not there yet. So I'm, I'm somewhat involved with that project, just because I am working, um, in the actual Widow's Hole, I'm working on a dredge project, and that dredge spoil is going to go onto that property as part of, um, the secondary, uh, restoration of it, so nothing at this point has been done over there. So we're still working with the agencies on, on that. But yeah, I think this time around, they're gonna put the rock in the water, because the rock in the water is what's going to protect the vegetation.
Yeah, i- if you, if you put rock behind the intertidal marsh, it, it has no value whatsoever. You know, I mean, as far as for planting a marsh. Marshes do very well in stillwater situations, non-wave action. Uh, they've been there for a million, you, you can look at our, our wetland here on the shoreline, those wetlands have been there for so many years, but because of recent activity, whether it be the increased boat action, plus the northwest winds, you see that continual erosion that we've noticed in the last twenty-five, thirty years on the shoreline. So it's obvious to me that we need to have a wave-abating structure at this location, and, and get the planning behind it. And it's all, to me, it's all about getting the right elevation, getting the right plant, and the genome, proper genotype, and the proper wave abatement reflection.
So Jane-
Getting the water out.
I'm interested in your comments, can we still get like critiques of what went right and what went wrong with these two local examples? And also, I understand that Chesapeake has got quite a bit of work done. Um, and whether or not we can find something there that's similar that we can learn from. I don't know, maybe you've been down that road, but we're here, stuck in Staten Island. We're here trying to go, well, we like this one, we like that one, and I'm like, I don't, I don't know, you know?
Yeah.
Green engineer.
I, I think this is a real, uh, excellent educational opportunity, and you folks are really, um, our resource. It would be, it would be very helpful if you could, at the next presentation, show us the Widow's Hole, from your point of view, and the other one that was a success, the Learning Center.
And the Chesapeake, or wherever you think, or Staten Island.
So we see, uh, maybe three, uh, projects, four projects that have failed or that are successful. This will help us, inform us, um, because I'm ready, I'm not ready to pull the trigger on this, I could say, project number two looks pretty good, but I would certainly want to compare it to, um, these others in the water working examples.
Chick, do you have comments?
I, I do want to go back through what we talked about. Um, cause I, I think that they've been responsive to some of that. I'll say that I, I certainly agree, um, I did look at Widow's Hole and, uh, the comments that were made, as much kind of dynamic environment, didn't have the rock protection, had a little bit of shore, offshore, uh, was my observation as well. And I did just look up on an aerial, the, uh, Learning Center, and as Jane said, that's-
Very protected.
Backwater area, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so we did talk about, um, checking the height of, uh, structure, which Chuck has addressed, I, I believe, uh, well, in this submission. Uh, they have removed the rocks from the south side, I think that was good, my observation on that was, that's the area where there's an existing intertidal marsh, a bog, uh, that is successful, so let's not mess with that.
Yeah.
Uh, and using it as a control and planking, I doubt if you're gonna get much to establish there, but I just don't want to,
Where's he talking about?
Take advantage of additional scouring of that existing intertidal marsh.
Um, do you have these? Can you point to what you're talking about? This, I'm sorry.
Which ver- which version is in your hand?
This green area, this is alternative three.
Okay.
This green area is where they removed the structure, and that's where I was concerned, that a new structure there could damage that intertidal marsh, and, and that-
And what's the intertidal marsh? The, the beige with the green?
It's the gre- the green area, is that what we're talking about?
Right, it's labeled, okay.
So that is responsive, uh, we also said-
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm so thick, but when you're talking about removing the structure, are we talking about what's on that, um, hillside on the adjoining property as a structure? What structure are we talking about?
Removing, uh, removing the sill, the, the new rock sill that they're proposing. The prior plan had rock-
Nothing that's there physically, it's just in concept that there was a suggestion, and it's been abstractly removed, right? Thank you.
We also talked about meandering of rock structures, uh, it seems as though alternative one does that, but I do note that, uh, the rock sill is actually below mean water, and I think we probably want to think about that. And I have kind of a suggestion, again, I'm just kind of going back through notes. We talked about reversing the pattern, uh, and alternatives one and two do that. And that was actually my suggestion, but I actu- I actually am going back on myself, cause I think there could be some merit to alternative three, uh, when I see the depiction here of what I'll call an accretion, or a filler, behind that little small structure. There, there may be some merit to trying to promote that, and I think what's being illustrated is, that as you just make the wave energy, you're gonna get continued settling of fine and even coarse sediments. Uh, and that may add some additional protection, so, you know, leaning toward at least a variation on alternative three, because of that concept. Um, we, we said, consider the ebb and flow, and, uh, but that's shown on the plans, as well as the wave energy, uh, and fetch, which is also shown on the plans. But even though that northwest wind is prevailing, and, and certainly winter prevailing, you're gonna get fetch from other angles as well.
Right.
Right.
So I think it's generally from the west. So all that said, you know, this is responsive. I did ask for input from other agencies, it's really not just the village here, building permits from the Army Corps, the DDC, and the trustees. And those agencies are important, I- But as you all observed, this is a kind of a, a new concept, it is, there is risk, always. And, um, you know, I, I really liked the input from the last- It is, there is risk always. And um you know, I I really liked the input from the last meeting, Marion. You also mentioned Scott Peterson.
Right.
Didn't hear his name come up or what his role might be. But speaking to people with some knowledge, and I think Will made that point today, let's look at successes, let's look at failures. Let's take this slow, let's compare, understand what we're trying to do. So with that said, um again, at least to give some additional input and to to help kind of steer this. I think three has a feature that I like. Uh there's a few things about it that I don't like. The structures aren't really meandered. And I think maybe they would be better if they followed that mean low water um contour. And the one on the south side closest to the dock comes very close to the shore.
So can you point out here what the mean low water contour is?
It's that dark line.
Okay, the dotted line.
Minus twenty point five.
That's what two is doing.
And, you know, in the interest of taking. Taking it slow and and really trying to understand. I'm just wondering if we're trying to create too much and maybe um, you know, maybe everything should be pushed a little bit more to the east. Uh keep the contours, keep the general configuration on alternative three. Meander those structures and follow the shoreline. Don't have that southernmost sill come so close to um. The existing mean high water, because you may be able to get some uh marsh to establish there if you change the orientation of that a little bit.
So when you, Mr. Hamilton, when you um or Jane, when you picked the um the fetch as being, you know, whatever, northwest. Is that like where you historically saw that um? The wind came sixty, seventy percent of the time, um forty percent? How did you decide that that was the the direction?
Determination for northwest was that's the one that's gonna have the higher velocity over lo- longer distance and larger wave action. So based on that, and again, uh we it's, you know, as as Chick says, it's west to northwest, but you're higher velocity, more energetic waves and 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 more uh.
Yes.
Action is from the northwest and that's that's how we use it as a foundation. Even if you come from the west, which is pretty much straight from the left-hand side of the pla- plan, we're still gonna abate that wave action. So I I think whether we go, if you go from west to northwest going up, you're you're still gonna meet the needs with with the structures as proposed. But as Chick says, if we if you want us to pull it back, we're along the water lines. Uh we we can do another design on that. The issue with the other agencies and it flat out, the D E C does not do any more pre-application conferences.
Yeah.
Do anything. You have to do a submission, they do review, and that's how they do work. And it takes months and months to do that. And I would have a problem doing that. As far as the Corps of Engineers, the Corps of Engineers' applications are reviewed by the Fish and Wildlife Service, EPA, National Marine Research Service, same thing.
Let me ask you, um with, if you've got the wind coming in here at north-northwest and it hits the end of the bulkhead on the adjoining property. It's gonna deflect off that. We've got like one of these, what are we calling these? Rock sills? Um very close to the end of that property. Um what, and it varies on different pieces, different plans, different scenarios.
Right. I mean, the best.
What was you're thinking about?
The best, I think the best option is is number uh number three, where we're we're out way out there. Because if there's any kind of wave action coming down there, it's gonna hit there and and that's gonna be your absorbing.
Right.
Right on that that northern, as we move it in, uh you'll still have the same same protection, but it's below. This this kind of keeps the wave action out farther out into the water and deeper water and more energy absorb it.
And that's leaning you towards which of these scenarios?
I still like number two. I I like that catches me. I mean, I, that number two, I mean, and if you look at number two, if you look at the nor- number two is the one where you have that curve, kind of like a natural, a natural shore. Shorelines aren't really straight unless they're like a beach. They usually they have some sort of curvature. You look at number two, uh we're pretty tight up to uh the northern uh bulkhead area. And and we, to me, if even if the wind came from the west, it'd still be reflected out. What I like about number two is the southern rock. When the wave comes into that rock sill, it's gonna keep, it's gonna protect not only Mr. Spiegel's property, but also the area to the south to a degree. So uh I kind of like number two, but uh but I I I I also go with 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 Chick that I, maybe we can bring these structures back a little more toward me inside mean low water. Uh which would be less filling, less alteration, and and we can do that, you know?
Yeah, I've I've got a question. And and this is mainly regards the height of of these uh uh rock sills. Uh is I understand it, and there may be some variation between the different proposals, but the height is about equal to the height of the water at high tide?
That's correct, John. I mean, the concept is, remember, a wave is energy moving through the water.
And let let me, before you before you answer, let me let me go on a little bit, because i- I mean, if if that's the case. Then most of the time, since you only have high tide, you know, twice a day for, you know, for an hour or so. Uh most of the time, these are gonna be out of the water. And and if you look at them at low tide. Uh and again, I'm not quite clear where 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 the uh water's edge is at mean low water, but but it's clo- close to, I think, where these are. So these are gonna be two and a half, three feet tall. Uh and most of the time, they're gonna be clear of the water. So at low tide, you're gonna have what looks like. Any o- any other rock wall sitting two or three feet out of the water. And and I'm wondering whether. That would really be considered a, you know, a a living shoreline or soft shoreline as opposed to a hard.
Because most. Oh, no, that that's that's the that's the.
Looks like a rock wall just sitting two feet out of the water.
Every, if you look, every rock wall from the Chesapeake to New York, Staten Island, every and and uh everyone uh is well above the bottom. Everyone is, I I I can send you all the designs that are out there. I mean, that is not as prevalent on the south shore of West Hampton Dunes is that. Three foot hot, three foot wide on the top, angled out, has a twelve-foot footprint. And that's and that's, you know, a a foot above high water elevation. All natural shorelines have or look like rock structures. Did you did not hidden. Every one of them is e- e- exposed at low tide and entirely. And depending on the tide, I mean, if if you do, now you do a uh. A living shoreline on the south shore, they're about the same height, our height, three foot. If you do one up in the north shore. Up in, let's say, Stony Brook Calva with a six-foot tide range, you'll have a six to eight foot, you know, shore uh height. The concept is, again, to bait the wave action, allow sediment and the plants to grow. That's that's the concept. Because this this vegetation is, I think, you you we already said, our successful project is still water in a canal. We're trying to create still water in kind of an active wave area that, so we can stem erosion and hold the shoreline and protect the property. That's what living shorelines are all about, you know. And right now, that's what this science is doing. And it came about in Chesapeake because it had so many eroding shorelines, large fetches, and there was no, and they didn't want rock revestments. They didn't want walls, they didn't want bulkheads, they wanted a natural shoreline like they had in many parts of Chesapeake back. And that's where the concept came. People put put these structures out, similar to what we call breakwaters, knock the wave action down and plant a marsh. And I I I'll send you a whole bunch of photographs of how successful that has been in the Chesapeake. I I've read a couple of books, you know, that are currently out there now. They're, you know, the science is not changing. It's pretty much the same science. But again, I think the key thing you're gonna find out is dedication to doing it right. And if it doesn't work. Do maintenance and 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 make it work. And you have, it's it's not like, it's not a finely tuned machine, but. We can do a bulkhead and never have to come back for fifty years. Or we could do this and and you have to work on it.
The village, the village.
Actually, that, that's that, that's uh uh, you know, there's a, there's a question of the location in in terms of. How far out it is as to as to where the shoreline is at 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 mean high water and and mean low water. So where it is in relation to that. But but also what what the height is in relation to 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 high water and 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 low water. So uh I mean, I mean, I think you're telling, you're you're answering my question and telling me that that the experience is is it should be as high as. A- as the height of the water at mean high uh high tide.
Chick, do you have a comment?
Uh yeah, it kind of speaks to um John's comment, but also something I said before. That we may be, and again, this is all conceptual and we're learned. But I said before, we may be trying to do too much. Um and by that I meant if the structure is farther offshore. Uh some of these show it below mean low water. What happens at high tide when you get a northwest wind? That 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 structure will have some effect to dampen wave action, but you could still get pretty significant scouring and potential erosion. So, you know, speaking to John's point, what if you moved it closer to shore? Made it potentially a a smaller structure, still have it covered at a mean high tide. But not have it be a four-foot offshore wall that has the potential to have scouring at high tide or reinforcement. Um maybe, you know, just one way to look at it and I.
I mean, you know, Chick.
Or research on that.
The reason, the the footprint we put in here is pretty much where the title wetland had been prior to the erosion going on at this property. So we're really trying to create and restore all the wetlands, tidal wetlands that had been lost in the last twenty years. That's that's the kind of one of our goals and objectives in this in this product design. If you want us to do less, you know, less square footage, less restoration, uh that could be part of our design also. And that's uh, we can do that too.
So I guess.
The point is to be successful, you know, not have it wash out.
Yeah. May I say something? When I look at the the map of this and I've been there, if you put in this rock wall, it essentially acts in a way as a bulkhead. When you put it straight across, if you look at it, and then will that create excessive scouring to the south of it? Is this just another a a another example of a bulkhead in sheep's clothing?
Yeah, so passing along the problem to the next neighbor.
Yeah, well.
Well, you know, it's the design and if, have you read, have you guys seen a copy of the Living Shoreline Guidelines that the D E C has put out?
No.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll send you a PDF of it, okay?
Yeah, that would be good.
I'll send you a PDF and you can, it will tell you the design, it will talk about how it works. And it, it, you know, they're they're not a singular, they're a singular type of structure. They're not a coastline structure. You know, once you put one in like a bulkhead, you gotta put them everywhere. The answer to that is no. As far as scaring, you have to understand that the wave action coming here was a two-foot wave on a on a northwest wind of thirty miles an hour. It's gonna hit that, it's gonna be absorbed. What a matter if it knocked down.
Alright.
And then reflected out. So, you know, putting scaring down and and the other thing, it's a hard bottom there, that's not gonna scour out. But uh we, I will send you a PDF of the one on uh the Living Shoreline Guidelines from the D E C. And I think maybe that might give you, answer some of the questions of how the design is done and how they're built and they've been successful.
Yeah, I think that'd be really good. Lily, I think one thing, if you look at the profile, these are like little pyramids. They're not like vertical walls.
But they're still, you know.
Yeah, but I think that the way the wa- water and the wind comes here. I think it's gonna have like a different kind of effect, not totally different, but a different effect than when you hit like a hard vertical.
So when I look at it, when I look at the three examples, that is number one, which is a softer.
Aren't they all the same in terms of the structure, the rock sill on the ground?
They're different in player.
Layout, but then will that just ricochet off to the property south of it?
Yeah, my my point was, if you look at these little guys, the little totems here, right?
I see that, yeah.
And the way the water comes, it's not gonna be quite the same. Not to say that it's not gonna give pushback, but we want pushback, right? Because we don't want that wave action to continue eroding, so.
Again, just south of our south rock sill is the pier itself, which has pilings, which is gonna absorb wave energy. And remember, south of the pier, we're gonna plant some marsh and place some sand, which will also, you know, hopefully uh work in a way that will absorb and protect. The marsh now on the property of Mr. Spiegel, but also to the property and bog marsh to the south, so. Uh and even if you look at that property to the south, you can see on the on the one, on the site plan, she has some rock right down there in front of her bog already. Uh, you know, and again, even the survey noticed that it had the uh rockweed growing on it. So, you know, I think rock habitat seems to be doing very well uh in that area. So we're gonna work on a redesign that uh we'll we'll take some of your concerns in from, especially with Chick, to uh bring it into low water. Uh we'll look at making, we're gonna maintain the permeability. I'll uh, we we will, if you want, we can stake it out. I I like, before, I'd like to know you're gonna be coming out before I stake it out. In case I do get a northwest wind.
Let's let's look at uh your next presentation, which should include some case study of success and failure.
Yeah.
That is going to be very important.
Education.
Um so that we can start developing in in our head. And if you send us the uh Living Shoreline PDF, that would be great.
Sure, okay. And I think, I think the one thing we're gonna do, based on what Chick has kind of advised me. I I think we're gonna submit an application to the D E C because they won't do a pre-app. I might as well just submit an application and start getting some feedback from them, you know?
Well, not the trustees, John, if we didn't get you.
We can go to the trustees too. In fact, we'll go to all the regulatory agencies and and I I I uh again, and then we'll just, we'll we'll work it out. I I really wanted to do the design with you guys. I really did. Because it's your local community and I want to do it that way, but if you want us to.
Just because they approve something, doesn't mean that we're gonna approve it.
Well, I agree a hundred percent, a hundred percent. I agree that, but you know.
I mean, you might want to just do it like you're doing here, like a discussion item, so we can get smarter about what it is that we're looking at here.
Yeah.
I I don't know if that's an option with, you know, um the trustees, or if it's an option with, you know, the core, anybody else, but.
No, the other regulatory agencies are not doing discussions right now. They're they're not doing discussions at all. They don't do pre-applications. They don't do pre-visits. They don't do anything anymore. So you gotta submit something, get them looking. And just and just start going through the process. That's.
Okay, I think we want to uh move on.
Okay.
You've got your homework. This has been really informative. And hopefully we'll see you next month.
Sounds good. Alright, thanks. Have a great month.
And I realize you gave us like a little quick and dirty as to what went wrong in Widow's Hole, but if, you know, Jane, you're probably on the inside there a bit. You could give us some more details, so part of our whole educational.
Absolutely.
Process.
I'll I'll talk to the people up in Cornell. I think Steve Shaw and Chris Pickerell were um involved with that. So I'll just get their take on what they think went wrong besides what I think went wrong there, but.
That would be great.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Alright, have a great month. Happy Thanksgiving.
Just one one quick comment, you know, I'm not saying you have to go to the other agencies.
Yeah.
This is, this is fine. We do do discussion items, and I think all of this has been very awful. So the more you get us comfortable and have a better project, you know, then you'll be in a better position to justify it with the other agencies. But.
Perfect.
It's up to you. How you make your application is up to you.
Okay, thanks so much, guys. Alright, take care.
Thank you. I need to take a moment, Chris. So we're moving on to um. The uh one seventy-four Main Street. Thank you for your patience.
We've been batting around ideas about how to preserve uh the unique topics. Uh garments, books, art that we have stored in the uh in the storage side of the house and avoid. And um we uh initially, one of the ideas we thought about was to, because it's a whole basement, maybe we'll, we can excavate down and excavate. But uh we're we're really, really nervous about the uh doing something that would um perhaps structurally uh hurt. So um we decided to try to create an archive for preservation in the back of the property behind the uh what we have now with the railroad shop. And um. I have presented a couple drawings, two details. I, uh, presented a couple drawings, seemed to be too difficult. I'm surprised by you guys. That's the part, the, the thought would be for us to build a new exactly the same size, um, structure. Uh, book, the whaleboat shop. Uh, it would be similar in time. And that's why I'm tired. Planting plants that are a wetland.
And that's what was.
Narrow zone, up on pilings. The structure, it was not sitting on, on the, on the. These, this elevator we have here, which is just five elevations, shows that we're up on, uh, up on pilings and, uh, there's vision because we saw our back from the main house, we can, we can't, we can't get down to it. And turn it down slow. Uh, that's also supposed to put a door in the, um, back of the weather boat house, because that has access to another small structure that we have. Uh, handicapped access to the bathroom and also storage space, which is, which is still. And, and so basically that's the idea, and it, um, as I said, it would not be on the way. Now, the flow of water and rain just go underneath. And so we basically just, just wanted to write by before we went into the drawings and the work.
Chick, are there flagged wetlands on this?
Yes, there's a freshwater wetland system to the west, uh, that is, uh, it's a low lying area.
Yep.
And, uh, I, I am familiar with that area, so certainly would need to be delineated and mapped. Um, and we would consider setbacks and all of the things that we consider.
What, what is the existing, uh, boathouse used for?
The whaleboathouse?
Yes.
Um, it's just a little shop to show, it's a museum, really, it's a, it was, uh, given to us by one of our trustees, she built it. Um, Annie Cooper Boyd, I told you, well, lived next door and her father was a whaleboat builder, generations of it from South Hampton. And so this member of our horde wanted to build a much smaller replica of it, and she, we had a lot of whaleboat equipment. Uh, and so it's all in there, and there are videos, and there are books, it's really quite charming, it's a little educational around the industry itself. This boat addition, which, which isn't an addition because it's unattached, takes off, takes, and everything, um. And Greg didn't mention that the whaleboat shop is also on pilots.
Yes.
Uh, so.
She needs to introduce herself.
And the reason, um, the reason for this little separate bathroom is that the, the Annie Cooper Boyd house is, we just found out, 30 years older than we thought it was. Um, we had a thing called endropanology done, where they dig into the timber, into the beams and the house, and they found out it's older than we thought it was, just a sort of a coup on our part, and we're really pleased with that, but um, the archival space is space that we, we housed everything with archival paper, with some boxes, but a legal house. And so it is not properly archived, and we have many, many paintings that she put in this, or in history of this area back in the late 1800s. We have documents, we have photographs, so we're the same, so we only protect it all in the right environment. And that is only done through a house that is not open constantly all day long. In other words, we would, you'd have to set up an appointment if you wanted to come see something, and we would only be open on certain hours. So that it is totally protected for the next one hour, under whatever, but, um, it really treasures that it is, um, we, we have an awful lot in that little tiny house. And we've run out of space and the proper.
Yeah, we have an, uh, actually an archive.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy French, president of the Star Society.
Thank you.
Um, one of the members of the board is an archivist, and, uh, she's done a, um, inventory of, of what we have to store and what we have to keep preserved, and, um, so this, this building, I've actually thrown in everything, uh, every box necessary to keep these things safe and, uh, uh, so we, we, we would actually work.
Have you been back here? It's very deceptive for Karen.
It's always measured down to what we already have.
Yeah, that's that one line.
I think before we can go much further, we need a wetlands.
Yeah. That's what we are.
Yes.
We're wetlands.
So, well, that's why we came here first.
Yeah, so in, in your, you need to get this, uh, flagged for wetlands, and then we can respond.
It looks like there's flagging at the very rear of the property.
Yeah.
That, that's.
Is that an old wetlands mapping?
And that follows the concrete pretty well, so that's probably the, the right location.
It's, it's really, uh, it's very educational for everybody to go into the backyard. It's a very different place than the front yard. And the other thing is, and I was shocked because I didn't know what was back there in terms of, uh, you know, if you do an aerial, you see that your neighbors, there are swimming pools, there's built out all the way to the property line, et cetera, but um, Chick, do we need more information to?
Well, it looks like we're about 50 feet from the, from, that proposed building, looks like it's about 50 feet.
Mm-hmm.
From, assuming that that squiggly line is where it's been flagged for wetlands, looks like we're about 50 feet roughly.
Yeah, um, actually, I, I'm, I'm, it's clear on the actual survey that I copied to make to superimpose the buildings on.
Speaking of the wetlands, you all know, we have a pump. And that pump was on, uh, the street where the nursery is, what's, what's the street called back there?
Oh, where it is.
Spring, of course, spring, spring, of course, spring, spring, because of the, the surge of water. It was, it was, it was a, it was a public pump for anybody who needed water. That, yeah.
Yeah, so let me show you this, um. Um, that means that's, yeah, that's part of what we, yeah.
Just giving the evidence that they're talking, you're out of your substantial. A very substantial Weaver, Will is right, that it shows that only 50 feet of wetland.
We can't do that.
They seem cool.
You know, you guys, this is a really big ask in terms of the wetland setback, so.
Yeah. Something, something just to bear in mind, it's, it's a, it's a very substantial, uh, relief.
75 feet is the setback for structures.
And if you were kind enough to sit through, so you've heard what the standards are, and, uh, i- it might be beneficial, uh, to sort of go through that process yourself before, uh, you kind of make the commitment, I mean, the buildings look beautiful and all that, and there's no doubt as to their necessity, you do a great job over there and all that, but it's, it's still a very, uh,
So even if it's on pilings, it's not actually sitting on the.
No, 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 no. No.
Doesn't work out.
The house we were just, uh, reviewing, I think that we spent the most time on this evening, was also on pilings. That house is above.
It's a structure that, you know, is.
Sits above grave.
It's detrimental to the wetlands to have that structure there.
How would you deal with a bathroom, the toilet?
Um, that would have to be ejected, we have, we're on the sewer line, so we would actually have an ejector pump, and that would be.
Yeah, there might be a possibility, just, I, I'm not going to offer too much in the way to design, but if you took the existing shed, which is beautiful, since it's on pilings, it would not be too difficult. And I'm not an advocate of, uh, orthogonal geometry, but in this case, if you did move that guy over to your side yard setback and brought the proposed shed, you would basically be looking at the back at two fairly identical masses.
Oh.
And, right?
You have to move the old shed.
Move the old shed, bring this guy in, I don't know where you put the bathroom, but that's, you're an architect, you can resolve the bathroom. Um, that might be a solution. And if you look at the, uh, setback requirements, throw that arc in there so that, um, you can bring those, because I don't think it would be a terrible cost to lift that existing shed, which is beautiful. But when I saw it, are they six by six on concrete blocks, correct? Something of that.
Yeah.
So they're on blocks.
That, that's, that's a pretty easy lift, um, financially, um, and I don't think there's anybody that would object to this, except that our hands are tied about the string lines. So if you can imagine coming out the back, and there's nothing sacrosanct about that view, um, if you had those two guys, that might work programmatically better than having a large amount of walkway.
Okay, um, yeah, and, uh, in terms of variance, is there any?
We don't do variance.
There's no variance on that.
Well.
We call it practicable alternative.
Yeah.
But there's no reason that you can't meet the setback. There's space, and, and Will, just like, you know, willy nilly came up with a great practical alternative, so.
We prefer not to have to move the existing shed, of course.
Have to look into it.
To know where the wetlands are. Yeah.
Well, that's why we came here for it.
Yeah.
I think you guys are doing, um, a wonderful, uh, more than task for the community, uh, we want to help. But you need to look at that string and then see if you can put those two structures orthogonal to the property, and you might solve the problem right there.
And buildings are beautiful.
I'll just make a suggestion, take a look at chapter 285.
Okay, well, I made a note on that.
Yep, that's what we've been talking about all night, um, what this board has to.
Yeah.
Like it or not.
Well, I really like this design.
Well, also, I personally speaking, uh, I really appreciate the effort in not to put a basement under the existing structure, because that really changes the karma of that whole thing, right?
One thing we have, because we have reservations, and people come look at it, and one thing we suggested was building a room within a room, and then we thought, apparently that's done, they can, it's almost like a big closet, and now we can't compromise this whole building by doing that.
Yeah, then, then it becomes a twilight zone.
That's why we went, anyway, that's a great suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye bye, good luck.
Oh, no, it's just a discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think we have to go back to the minutes.
Yeah, we have, John, um, do you have any comments about the minutes, which we did not pass?
I actually have a comment, I don't understand number one, what does this say? On a motion offered by Lily Phil and seconded by Mary Ann A, the minutes taken on blah blah were approved and duly and duly amended to item four under correspondence requiring action. Is that granted the request for a one year permit extension? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me, does it make sense, is, am I the outlier here?
Amendment that you live for, the.
For what?
Yeah, to that.
I don't know what, what, um, what property this is or application or any, anything.
It's not, right. In a minute, or 64 Jermaine.
I don't think this makes sense, but is so, is all of item one talking about 64 Jermaine? So, um, maybe that should come earlier or something, on a motion offered by Lily Phil, seconded by Mary Ann. The minutes taken on August 4th were approved and duly amended. Amended to item four, what does it mean amended to item four?
Well, the item is, it fell on, uh, on the minutes, item four, item two, section three, section four, that's the correct. Or we want to change to 64 Jermaine.
So I, I guess like the board reg. I don't know if we're a board, are we a board or we're a committee? The committee granted the request for one year permit extension for work, the work in progress in regards to existing wetland permit. Also duly amendment to item one under correspondent requiring action in the matter of 64. I don't understand this, Doris. What does the second sentence mean? Also duly amended to item one under correspondence requiring action in the matter of 64 as the permit has expired.
And so 64 Jermaine happened.
Right. Do you understand this?
No, it could be clarified, um, maybe that, maybe, let, let's see if that can get clarified.
Yeah, it's not the spot.
Yeah. Let's, let's try to just simplify it, and to Mary Ann's point, maybe you start referencing, uh,
64.
64 real quick, the top part of the paragraph.
Right.
I hate to be critical of this because I could never do it. It's really, it's, it's, um, but it's important to begin it right.
Okay, so, what do you want me to do?
Make this make sense, so somebody could read it and understand what transpired. So you might have to go back and listen to the tape. And what it was, and I think Will's right, leading in was 64.
You just said you wanted to add a certain language to it.
What was the duly?
I, I don't understand what this.
What's the duly amendment tied to number four?
Doris, I'll come in, we'll work on this, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
John, did you have any comments?
Uh, no, I didn't, I just very briefly looked at it and I didn't get a chance, I was going to go over further and I didn't get back into town until actually five o'clock today. So I didn't have a chance to, to, to do that, so I'll, I can go back and.
I looked at everything else, I'm, well, we're not going to vote on it anyway, right? Because we're going to, so let's vote, let's make a motion to table, I make a motion to table these minutes until December 1st.
So noted, aye.
Aye. Call in favor, aye. I made the motion, Lily made the second.
Thank you for the, for the help.
I have one brief announcement before we adjourn.
Yeah.
That next Wednesday at five o'clock, there is going to be a Zoom meeting about the sewers expansion of the sewer service areas, et cetera. I hope you all attend.
I sent everybody an email.
To participate in the discussion, so, so make, make sure everybody knows about that.
And John, I gave those little, um, things, just carry them around, you hear people blowing leaves, it's a good idea to like, it, it gives like all the ins and outs in both English and Spanish.
Any other questions?
Okay.
One other announcement is the Blue Carbon Project that's being done out of Stony Brook, which is a Chris Gobler thing, out of the whole iconic estuary. They have chosen North Haven, Sag Harbor, and Shelter Island to do this work, which are going to be evaluating specific sites in the coming year, and then what it is, it's a matter of working on denitrification and reducing the carbon load for, in ocean, regarding ocean acidification, which is a combination of kelp, oysters, and what else? Kelp, oysters, kelp, oysters and.
Scallops.
No. Uh.
Something.
Okay, can, did you send?
I sent that to you.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have a question, is there any way that we can quantify the number of IA systems that, um, that have been installed in Sag Harbor? I would, I, somehow I would like to get that number, I would like to know how many residents we have in Sag Harbor. I'd like to know how many IA systems have been installed, because I think that it's a, it's a number that has significance.
So I've actually been, um, kind of working with North Haven on that because they're interested too, and we share, you know, all the coves. And a lot of it dead ends in the fact that, um, the county is locked up with, uh, you know, there was a, a data leak or a hack. So I actually got the location yesterday of where two of the people that probably control that database, where their offices are. So it's in Yap Head, so I'm gonna just make a, yeah, I'm gonna make a point of going and seeing if I can locate them physically and find out whether or not that, um, database is at all accessible or whether or not it's just, um, locked up for the duration.
Yeah, let me just clarify, the village has a request in for that information, we, we, we got that information roughly two years ago. And we've requested an, an, an update, this is regards to the sewer expansion committee and, and, uh, the village clerk has requested it. And as of Monday or Tuesday, uh, we're, we're trying to get a review of the village records showing what IA systems have been put in.
So.
How, however, it's my understanding that, that, that no village permit is required for a voluntary upgrade so that we can't get that from the village records. The only way we can get that is, is from the county records. Although if the people who did voluntary upgrades, uh, applied for either a Southampton Town or East Hampton Town grant, that will be on the records for those towns. East Hampton, uh, East Hampton Town i- is in the process of putting that data together for us. Uh, and we haven't requested the same thing from Southampton, uh, yet, but anyway, y- yes, we, 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 uh, agree with you that we need that information.
Right.
Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Hi.
All in favor? Doris? Doris, thank you.
Thank you, Doris.
Thank you.
Fred? Thank you.
See you all.
Chick? Thank you.